To our November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting, thank you for being here. If you would please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, could we have a roll call?
Councilmember Shippers.
Here.
Ellenbus.
President.
Ingalls.
Here.
King.
Here.
Mayor Folkins.
Here.
And if someone would approve or make a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Support.
Councilmember Ellenbus.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Folkins.
Yes. Motion carries. At this time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you come forward, if you would please state your name, and then write your name and address for the clerk. It would be greatly appreciated, and you could keep your comments to three minutes or less. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Rob Munger. Local real estate investor developer here. I'm here, I'm obviously a fan of Cadillac, but I was not, I haven't been a fan of the interaction of some of your board members. The leadership here has done a great job of trying to lead Cadillac to get them, get going in a positive direction. I see it happening. My concern is, I want more developers coming here, more positive development. And when the emotional interaction, what I'm seeing, it gives developers, you know, a sense of not feeling safe about investing because developers put money here and businesses put money here. And it's just, it's gotten, last time it got extreme. As far as I know, we're in the United States, and in the United States, it's capitalism, it's not socialism, it's not communism, it's not a monarchy. If somebody wants to renegotiate a contract, they can. If they want to ask for a raise, they can, okay? And I just had somebody ask me for a raise Friday, and it was just simply, no, not at this time. I didn't have to admonish that person or make them feel belittled or target that person. And so I just asked that, I've watched the professionalism here, and I'm very impressed with the leadership here. That's why I drove up tonight, is because I really believe in this team, and in a good team, we work together. We don't, you don't see the Detroit Lions bashing each other on the sideline. That's may, might have been how they used to do it. But I'd ask for a positive spin because we got some great things happening in Cadillac, and I really appreciate the leadership and what you guys are doing. And you guys deserve to treat each other better. So I sincerely, I appreciate all of you, and I appreciate opinions, but we need to be working together for the community, so thank you.
Thank you.
I am Pat Ponzek of Cadillac. For weeks, for months, now going on years, the citizens of Cadillac have often filled this room beyond capacity to tell you about the negative impact of short-term rentals. Concerned citizens come here time after time after time, trying to preserve the quality of their neighborhoods. I repeat, concerned citizens have come here time after time after time, trying to preserve the quality of their neighborhoods. Where in this history has there ever, ever been a room overflowing into the hallway of people telling you about the benefits of short-term rentals or bed and breakfasts? They aren't here because there's no such group. You're considering changing zoning to allow special use permits for short-term rentals, whatever flavor they claim to be, which in essence will end up being spot zoning. If you do this, you ignore the wishes of the many in favor of the very few. You ignore the heartfelt concerns of homeowners in favor of the few who want to turn homes into businesses. Why?
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Art Stevens. And each of the five members of the council, I know you received at least two communications from me on the, on the LDFA bylaw situation. On that note, I did hear back from two of you that called me. Councilmember King and Councilmember Ellenbus, I appreciate you taking the time and, and making that contact on this important issue. That's a really important part of being on the council is communicating, so thank you for doing that. On there, we talked about the ten-plus violations of the bylaws. The encouraging part is going to the LDFA meeting the, the last time, they, that board is real, they have the spirit to, a lot of them didn't realize that, and they really want to follow those bylaws. So encouraging the council, first of all, to, to join in with them on that. The bylaws and the Public Act are there for a reason. On that note, I just wanted to make sure that we're very, they, I think they were going to talk about this, but they couldn't go into closed session because it requires a two-thirds of the, the board by the Open Meetings Act, and they didn't have that to go in about the bylaws and following it. Tonight on your agenda, I just want to make sure you're clear. The Michigan Public Act says the authority shall be under the supervision and control of a board of seven members. Seven, they're appointed by the city manager and then approved by, in this case, the city council, the governing body. So I don't know if you're aware of that, but that's the Public Act, there's two spots on your website that reference that fact. The appointment is the city manager's, approved by the council. If you don't have him appoint and give the name to you, you're eliminating that part of the Public Act. And I think that's why it's referenced twice on your, on the website as well. I don't know if that's the process tonight, but I saw there was an interview. But that doesn't have to happen. It's just allowing the city manager, that's what his authority is, is to, to give you the name, and then you guys approve, just like they've done since nineteen ninety with that committee. So just asking that you keep that in mind and follow the Public Act. And let's go with the, let's go with the LDFA board, they're looking at making sure we follow the Public Act in the future. We probably wouldn't be in the situation we are today if that had been being followed the whole time, and I think they're realizing that. Thank you very much. I do have, by the way, to pass down a section of that for each council member that shows the Public Act aspect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Andrea Lilly, here to speak on the PFA situation. I've been attending these meetings since I was informed by the M Part member, Mike Jury, that the city of Cadillac was reluctant to take any action in informing residents of the possible exposure to forever chemicals. There were, this is what he said, "Too few households on wells to bother with testing." I've made contact with the Utilities Department several times since 2020 in an effort to learn any information about possible contamination. PFA testing was done in the LDFA zone in 2021, 22, and 23 that showed elevated PFA presence. This was information that was not communicated to me despite repeated requests. Having learned of the presence of elevated levels being recorded during those times, I question the ethics of this entire organization. I question the purpose of the presence of this council and department heads when the health and safety of their community, of your community is in jeopardy and lies, lies are actively being told. I was lied to. The information provided at the town hall, two weeks, three weeks ago, regarding the elevated PFA levels being reported in the LDFA zone in 2021 to 2023 was information, sorry, already said that. It makes me question the validity of the council's ability to discern what care and respect means for the community if you're allowing this to continue. My purpose for bringing this up is to elucidate the established past and present behavior patterns of this council and its leadership within the community and to encourage a change in behavior. At the last council meeting, we witnessed a tableau, an illustration of how fractured city leadership is. Is it any wonder M Part was being told that the local government isn't concerned? Having been at the last city council meeting and being present at the town hall, I was dismayed at the lack of participation from the attending council members. At the last city council meeting, I witnessed an irate, angry council member making a variety, like, nope, nope. You're cool, you do you. But he made a variety of claims regarding the ethical standards that were casually done in his absence. I heard passionate defensive statements that became heated and louder as the topic was continued. I saw council members become so impassioned that faces were red, fingers were pointed, and eyes rolled in exasperation. So much passion regarding a situation that can be easily resolved with cooler, when cooler heads can prevail. Yet, at the town hall, I saw none of this passionate energy. I saw the council there, I can say that you were at least present, but where was your participation? Where were your questions? You were all supportive of this town hall, yet none of you participated in questioning any, a statement there in that room would have meant a lot.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi. Andy Van Oost from Sunnyside Drive. I would like to congratulate whoever congratulations are due because I didn't see any short-term rentals advertised anywhere in Cadillac, any illegal ones. I saw a legal one, so good for you guys, it's been a couple of years to get that far, but it's progress and I appreciate it. But, you know, I still have an issue with the bed and breakfast that's proposed as I, I feel that it's a short-term rental, even if it's owner-occupied. We had at least one owner-occupied illegal short-term rental in town that maybe gets sidestepped or whatever. And, and I was just wondering, you know, when we did this, how many illegal short-term rentals were in the area by the time we started finding out about it, the neighbors and I, when they had the one come in by us and really lit the fuse a couple of years ago. There have been over twenty illegal short-term rentals before we came here. These groups started coming in here, and I just was wondering today, how many would there have been if nobody stepped forward? And it's, it just, it would have been a catastrophe. You know, and it's not fair, and then I also think that bed and breakfast, the plan to, the proposed idea of RM1 and RM2 as a whole, going to bed and breakfast seems a little insane to me. You know, I would think that you could restrict it to real defined areas. The, between the commercial and residential, you're taking housing, multifamily housing, and converting it into businesses, and we already have a short-term rental, or we already have a housing issue. That's why Rob is coming in here, he's adding housing to this, and we've got the Lake Street adding housing, and we're cannibalizing our own housing. So we create, we're lighting the fire and we're there with the fire hose. So it would make a lot more sense to eliminate and preserve the housing to the residents that are from Cadillac. And also as these short-term rentals or bed and breakfast come in, we have issues with shutting down motels and stuff like that. So this is, I think that people are fearful that they will, you guys will change the zoning in their area. When I, when I talked to Marcus a couple of years ago on the phone with John Wallace, they were saying they wanted to change the zoning on Sunnyside to make it consistent, to round it off. So it's like, that scares everybody, and we went to that, that Cadillac West Corridor Development Authority. You guys said, shut up, I don't want to hear about this right now. But that was a group that was proposed as saying they want to do this, and I haven't heard any one of them ever say that that's true. So there's an issue with trust with the city council and managers and.
My name's Audrey Wood. At the last city council meeting, it lasted a hundred and fifty-four minutes, or at least that's what the time is on the YouTube video. Out of that time, only four point five percent was spent on talking about PFOS by the council. Twenty percent of the time was dedicated to council members yelling, slamming hands on tables, and making their frustrations known over the issue of the city manager's admittedly underhanded attempt to get a raise and bypass the city charter. There was thirty-two minutes of this nonsense while citizens in the audience, some of whom have been drinking contaminated water for years, had to patiently wait for the topic of PFOS to finally be addressed, only for you guys to use seven minutes of your time. Public, sorry, public comments spent fourteen minutes telling you their concerns with the three-minute limit. At the town hall, the public asked around forty-six questions. Seventeen of those were from my sister Andrea Lilly and I. That's thirty-seven percent of the questions. I did have no knowledge of any of you guys asking questions. You guys had an opportunity to live up to your guiding behaviors and core values, to lead by example, and you didn't. I'd like to know if any of you did what you guys said you were going to do and had a short meeting with the experts before the town hall. When I got there at 5:00 PM, I did not see a single council member. I did not see the city manager. I didn't see anyone until 5:20, and I don't know when you guys showed up, so that, you know. But if you were there, it'd be cool to find that out. There was concerns expressed about the lack of attendance by the town, for the town hall at the latest LDFA meeting. Coincidentally, I emailed the city council and Mr. Pasha on this concern a week before the town hall. I was told that the upcoming town hall-style meeting is a meeting that is being put on by the state and federal governments and not an official meeting of the city. A flyer they very recently put together is attached. And the time, date, and locations are the same that were provided publicly last week during the city council meeting. The city will also share the information online. The date, time, location were in, in the midst of the hundred and fifty-four minute video. So people would have to dig. Folks were given a week to find out about the town hall if they didn't want to watch the council meeting on YouTube. A week to arrange schedules. You guys could have gotten word out three weeks before the town hall, like other people did. Instead, if people even saw it on the city website, folks had one week to plan. That's not a lot of time for working families, that's not a lot of time for getting coverage or childcare. I was also led to believe that the city had initiated the town hall. That is not the case per this email, despite being told otherwise. This is not the first time credit has been swiped away from others to make themselves look more productive. The lies should stop. It's really way past time for the lying to end.
Thank you.
Bill Barnett from Stimson Street, good evening, everybody. Thank you for those that did attend the town hall. I want to thank you each for being there and playing a part in that. I would like you folks to announce tonight the fact that the only home that you've tested, one home in Cadillac has been tested, one, and that home came back five times over, if the number's accurate, which it's a good company, five times over the federal guideline, over twenty points. Twenty NG per liter. And the other one was five, so they got averaged out to about thirteen. It's an exceedance that's been going on for fifty years for that homeowner. I'd ask you to announce that so the public knows over in the North Park area to have a heads up. There's at least thirty wells being, twenty to thirty, I think thirty wells over there being tested. I'd recommend that the city help Eagle, find out who's not being tested and do that. You have a hundred and twenty-seven wells in the city. And Eagle is testing thirty of them across from Borg Warner, which was formerly Kaiser, going toward CNE Market, that whole big square. Thirty wells right there, and a test recently shows concern that the water's not going north, it's going south. So I would ask the, the council to consider testing ninety-seven more of those wells. You have a hundred and twenty-seven wells in this town, and starting with the ones close to the industrial park. Do your job too, everybody else is, the LDFA's been paying for these tests. The city should share some responsibility in how this matter's been mishandled. And I think they should be paying for some of this. And one thing you can do for your citizens is test wells while we wait for the state to do their thing and the EPA. So I would ask for some testing. I would ask that you get the news out relative to what's happened on the border of Cadillac going north and what needs to be told to North Park and Pine View. These people are on wells out there. They're on wells, they're not on the hearing system. I talked to one today who's sitting up in a hospital for other reasons, but these people are afraid to test their water because they don't want their house value to go down. We have a problem, we need to convince them to test. You can help us by attesting throughout the city, you guys know where these wells are, you must. The third house that you know about hasn't been tested in two months, Kevin, Kevin's house. You've tested one house, the other gentleman, JT Anderson, tested his own. The city has lifted one finger since this started, and I think you're, you're way behind the eight ball here, and you can help us, citizens, us, that's who you represent. I would ask that you, you change the manner in which you're handling this, and you be aggressive, aggressively test, spend some money, help who's out there in harm's way, who else is in harm's way. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm John Sari, live at 201 in Iroquois. And I wanted to say that bed and breakfast should be allowed in all zones. Cadillac is a tourist destination. The planning board and city council should do all they can to attract and accommodate tourists. It's so important for our economy. The courts loosened up the definition of family back in the eighties. Now people residing in a dwelling need not be related any longer. The number of people residing in a unit is not a zoning issue. But they have, but they, how they behave is important. The city's rules and regulations try to maintain the peace and quiet in the residential neighborhoods. We have to depend on people to observe and report these alleged violations. The city codes do not interfere with what the city wants to approve. The zoning ordinance could have an overlay zone that allows developments in all kinds of districts with a special use permit or a planned unit development. We should use those to our advantage. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Andy Ulrich from through and to East Cass Street. I was the guy who brought up the bed and breakfast possibility there. I just wanted to say, I feel like we're kind of getting in like a more of a, we're trying to get a sweeping change, you know, about bed and breakfast. This was the one property that was a bed and breakfast that operated that way for twenty-five years. I believe it's the best use for that. It'd be kind of like saying like, well, a gas station could operate here in the city for a long time, and then now we're not going to say, now we're not going to do that, or. Yeah, I, I feel like a lot of my concerns from my friends and neighbors about Airbnbs are legitimate. But I really do think this is a different thing. I'm trying to keep one of the most wonderful historic homes in Cadillac from being what happens to a lot of places where they get chopped up and all these apartments and really lose their character. So I just would appreciate your support in that. I want to do something cool, filling this thing with historic, you know, period furniture, it's going to be really classy. And I'm, I'm concerned that my one issue is kind of being dragged into a larger kind of sweeping thing for all of our RM1 and RM2. Maybe that is the most logical thing to go, but yeah, it would be, it'd be helpful to have some result, resolution in this, if that's possible, or if there's any more information that I can provide, please let, let me know. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Jerry Olson. I just have one thing I'd like to know about. I live on a dirt street here in Cadillac, and I haven't seen the the street department down in over two months. And I'm just wondering if everybody's okay and it's, they're working, it's all. And other than that, you have us have a good night, tomorrow morning you'll be here soon. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. And this evening, we do have the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Ellenbus.
Yes.
Mayor Folkins.
Yes, motion carries. This evening, we do have a community spotlight, Marcus, would you like to present that?
Yes, thank you, mayor, members of the city council. This evening, Chuck Barbieri with Foster Swift is here to provide an update regarding the LDFA. Chuck, good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marcus, members of the council and audience this evening. The spotlight tonight on the local development finance authority is going to be brief, but let me just summarize this brief overview at the start. The LDFA has represented a unique effort of this community to address contamination that existed from industrial sources that consisted of Volt organic compounds, primarily TCE, and chromium contamination. And while that focus remains, it has made adjustments, which I'll try to describe to you this evening, to accommodate and respond to the recent emergence of the per and polyfluoroalkyl substances, also known as PFOS. So with that overview, let me just go into some of the nitty-gritty for your benefit, and then allow, if you want, to ask questions. Very briefly, Cadillac's former industrial area, which was near its former well field, had several different sources. had several different sources, but the primary sources have been Northern Air Plating, which is believed to be responsible, or found to be responsible for the hexavalic chromium, and also Kaiser, which apparently released the volatile organic compounds, including the TCE. Because those contaminants spread and mixed, in 1989, the US EPA proceeded to designate these sites as Superfund sites and issued a plan to address that contamination through groundwater treatment and site use restrictions. The LDFA, created by and through the efforts of the city, was formed to acquire, construct, install, and operate that Superfund cleanup system. The city established a special assessment district to finance that cleanup by the LDFA. The LDFA, in undertaking this work, has done so voluntarily and without assuming the Superfund liability itself. That liability under Superfund is placed actually on the owners, the operators, the generators, and the transporters of the hazardous substances. Notwithstanding the fact that Superfund has done it, the city has, or more accurately, the LDFA has undertaken this unique approach, in part to spur and support industrial developments in the city. Because of those efforts, we can report that the chromium cleanup is largely completed. Actually, the treatment involving granulated activated carbon was able to meet the achieve and achieve the cleanup goal that was set a few years ago. As for the volatile organic compound cleanup, which involves airstripping to control and reduce the volatile organic compound contamination, that cleanup is continuing, and as a result of the last optimization study done several years ago, is expected to be completed in the 2040 decade. That's the brief nitty gritty of what the cleanup system was designed to do and is continuing to do. The emergence of PFOS has altered that to some extent. And even though the chromium cleanup met its goals a few years ago, concerns were expressed by the US EPA about the PFOS substances. And the LDFA, when confronted about this, pointed out that it was limited by the requirements that the LDFA set out to do. It was only going to perform the cleanup that the volatile organic compounds and the chromium contamination presented. While the LDFA declined to test for PFOS, Eagle agreed to test and did so in 2021 and 2022. And that testing did not show PFOS constituents in excess of Eagle's criteria. Now, since that time, US EPA has proceeded to adopt its own PFOS criteria. And in a few cases, that is slightly lower than Eagle's criteria. Now, US EPA's criteria took effect in July 2024, and Eagle is expected to adopt that probably over the next year. For the time being, the EPA has not proceeded to go ahead and relieve the LDFA of the ongoing chromium cleanup, because it would like the LDFA to perform certain PFOS testing according to US EPA procedures, which we'll call the Quality Assurance Project Plan, or CLAP for short. And that CLAP program and protocol was submitted by the city through its consultant, and the LDFA is waiting for approval from the US EPA to perform PFOS testing in the cleanup zone as part of the US EPA request. Now, the LDFA has gone beyond that request from the US EPA. On its own, it decided to do some tests of the affluent that it recovers as part of the cleanup system in the chromium cleanup. It tested, first of all, it tested what flows in from the recovery wells, and there was some PFOS in that. But it also has tested the affluent, or the outfall, that is discharge. And I can report that what is being the after-treatment condition of the water does not exceed Eagle's surface water quality criteria. There is some small level of PFA, or PFOA, in the discharge, but it's even below the US EPA's new drinking water criteria, which wouldn't apply in any effect, because no one is drinking the discharged water going into the Clam River. Now, the LDFA has also proceeded to do an audit of, or with the city's assistance, of what wells could still be in the restricted zone, that are not hooked up to city water. And as probably reported, or you've seen in the reports, three residential wells are found to be in use, or potential use. The city has already helped and assisted one residence to hook up. A second residence hopefully will soon be hooked up, and a third residence of a college student up in the UP, I hope, will also be connected, too. In the meantime, LDFA has also met with the US EPA and Eagle before and as part of the M-Part presentation that was alluded to in some of the public comments. And as a result of that, Eagle has tested a few wells, and the LDFA has cooperated with that and asked that some volatile organic compounds be tested for. And the LDFA has also indicated that if the volatile organic compounds are detected, it might also arrange to do testing for chromium, too. In summary, the testing for PFOS will be conducted using the US EPA approval of CLAPs for testing in the cleanup zone. The LDFA will be cooperating with Eagle to perform additional testing that is occurring through Eagle's efforts in Haring Township. In addition, the LDFA, at its last meeting, has agreed to continue some testing in the vicinity of the cleanup zone, and is also seeking proactively for approval to recapture and treat groundwater potentially contaminated with PFOS from two wells, S1 and S2, even though the LDFA is not required to do so. And finally, the LDFA is in the process of retaining an environmental consultant through an RFP process, which will consider and evaluate PFOS issues. And as a result of additional direction from the LDFA, legal input has been sought from the law firm of Warner, Norcross, and Judd as to LDFA responsibilities. And those items will be reported as they occur. There is an LDFA meeting that's planned for December 2nd next month. Currently, safety measures, to the best of the abilities of the city, the township, and LDFA are occurring. New well fields have been in place, so that anybody connected to the city water system will receive from the new well fields, drinking water that's free of PFOS. The groundwater restriction ordinances are being evaluated, and if necessary, they will be enforced. And as you can tell from my brief overview this evening, we've received cooperation, at least from two of the three, and we hope the last person will also cooperate with us. I think the LDFA has responded appropriately and has a history of responsiveness to the concerns that this community set out to have accomplished in the Cadillac area. I'll take any questions if anybody has.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appointments.
First is the interviewer.
Oh, you're right. Okay, so this evening, we have two individuals that are interested in serving on our LDFA. I would ask Mike if you could introduce that, please.
Can I ask a question, Mayor? Because I had this question before we were given the statute. And that is, is there a process for appointing members when there's more than one? It appears that the statute provides a process to appoint, and it's specific, it does say that the chief executive shall appoint, and then we approve that. There has been so much public comment and a trust issue in making sure we're following what we're supposed to do with the LDFA. If this is not the right process, I'd rather not follow an improper process. I want to make sure we get it right. And to that end, if Mr. Pescha is able to interview these gentlemen and propose a name, I think that would be the right process to follow, because it's pretty black and white in the state statute. I don't think it's ours to change.
Okay, thank you. Mike, would you like to clarify?
Yeah, so we're looking at the LDFA. The LDFA was part of a larger scope of statutes that were consolidated into one in 2018. The LDFA statute, Mr. King referenced it, says the authority shall be under the supervision and control of a board of seven members appointed by the chief executive officer of the city, village, or urban township creating the authority, subject to the approval of the governing body creating the authority. Meaning it's the chief executive official of the city, then with confirmation by the city council. Your charter defines the chief executive as the mayor. The manager is described as the chief administrative officer. Two very different things. My understanding, because we inquired about what had happened in the past, was nobody could recall the city manager ever appointing a member to the LDFA. Now, whether functionally that's happened or not is beyond the scope of my knowledge, but my understanding is it's never happened that way. So you're correct inasmuch as the mayor has the authority to appoint, subject to approval by the city council, and the manner in which you make those appointments, I will leave to the discretion of the mayor and the city council. I don't think interviews are prohibited. They're not required either. The manner in which the appointments are made is simply appointment by the chief executive and confirmation by the city council.
So, that being said, I know that in the past, when we have, not with the LDFA, but I know that when we've had more than one person that has been interested, we've received their application and their resume and their background. But then we also took the opportunity to do interviews of the two individuals, and the two individuals are here tonight. So I think that it would be good if we, as a council, would give them the opportunity to answer the interview questions, so that we collectively might understand better. We'd like to see serve on the board.
I really want to be careful, because I think that Mr. Homier is incorrect that the chief executive officer of the city is the mayor. We are not a mayor-strung community. The chief executive officer is the manager, and it seems meaningless without distinction, but it has very specific distinction. The charter goes on to say, section 7.1, about the mayor has ceremonial duties, is to head and to run the meetings, but all council members are equal and with one vote. So I don't think it puts it on the mayor to be able to decide and put that responsibility. It is on the chief executive, who is our manager. We are a manager-run city. And the reason I'm taking the time to do this is because I think we've seen publicly there is a mistrust about us following procedures and following what we're supposed to do. And I think it's really important that we follow what it is. And I believe Mr. Pescha has the ability to review who the people are and recommend to us, so the public sees that we are following the proper process.
Would you like to add to that?
Well, section 7.1 of the charter says, quote, "For all statutory and ceremonial purposes, the mayor shall be the executive head of the city." Which, again, this is Act 57 of 2018, a statutory purpose that names the chief executive, not the chief administrative official. The mayor, under the charter, is the chief executive official. The manager is the chief administrative official. So if you're going to read that language in concert with the statute, it is the chief executive and not the chief administrator.
Please.
If I can make a suggestion. I think that city council, should they wish to move forward tonight, has the ability to do so. As an alternative, Mayor, if you wish to conduct interviews of the two applicants, I would be more than happy to help facilitate that and be a part of that. And you could bring it back at your next meeting as well with the recommendation. Again, it would be coming forward from you, but...
And this is concern, Mr. Pescha. That puts the mayor in a position higher than the other four council members. And I don't agree with Mr. Homier. I think that because we're a mayor, I'm sorry, a manager of the city. Yeah, but that it has to be your position, and you are the CEO of the city, no question. Council manages that, but I think there's a danger, Mayor, if you take on that role, you're putting yourself above the other four council members and making decisions, and I think that violates charter. And I want to be careful, because people are concerned about us following the proper procedure.
Where can we see the, I'm looking online right now, and I see, is it, is that the 1913?
No, above it, there's a link.
Okay. Is it with the Cadillac Code?
Yeah.
Before the meeting this evening, you mentioned that there was something on the website that you thought was incorrect. Can you speak to that?
Yes, under the LDFA page, it incorrectly referenced the city manager making the appointments. We have such, we have since changed that, so.
So seven, just, you can see this when you turn to the charter. 7.1 talks about the mayor being the, shall be the executive head of the city. 7.2, in reference to the city manager, says, 7.2B says, quote, "The city manager shall be the chief administrative officer of the city." So there's a difference between those executive and the administrative. That's reflected, then, in the statute that talks about the chief executive, not the chief administrative. There are, by the way, other statutory references that use the similar, use the similar language. For instance, the Zoning Enabling Act, mayor has the authority to appoint members subject to confirmation by the city council. Same sort of scenario statutorily. But here, in this act, under that section regarding the LDFA, it clearly says it's they're appointed by the chief executive. Now, that's why I looked to past history, to see how the city had handled it in the past, and I could only go back so far, but there wasn't an instance that we were able to identify where the city manager had appointed or had appointed LDFA members subject to council confirmation.
Just so I'm clear, when, if the public is looking on our city website, and it's saying that the city manager has the responsibility, when did that get changed? I didn't get any notice that there was an error or that there was a change in our procedure. Did any of the other council members receive that? Is that a no all the way across?
It was brought to my attention this afternoon and was changed within an hour.
Today?
Yeah.
That, that concerns me. Is anyone else looking, and the public that was looking at our pages being told that it was the city manager's job? Again, my biggest concern is this issue of trust with the public. Again, my biggest concern is this issue of trust with the public. And it seems, I didn't hear about it. It got changed without us knowing about it, but it got changed without the public knowing about it either.
How would we have identified that to the public? When we learned of the error, we changed it.
Well, discussing it with us, discussing how the process is going to go, and then us determining where to go from there. And that would have been the most straightforward way to do it.
I disagree, but that's okay.
One more thing I'll just add is the Homerul Cities Act 2, MCL 117.3, also says that the mayor is the chief executive of the city. So that's why there's this differentiation between executive and administrative, reflected, we believe, in the statutory process on who has the authority to appoint, subject, of course, to confirmation by the city council. I don't know what statutory provision you're referring to. Give me a statute number. No, you're fine. So chief executive officer, under that definition, means the mayor or city manager of a city, the president of a village, or, for other local units of government or school districts, the person charged by law with the supervision of the functions of the local unit of government or school district.
And here, our manager is the person who's charged with that?
That only applies to other local units of government or school districts, apart from the city or the village. So the definition itself means, and I've quoted, "The mayor or city manager of a city, comma, the president of a village, comma, or, comma, for other local units of government or school districts, comma, the person charged by law with supervision of the functions of the local unit of government or school district."
And mayor or city manager would distinguish between a manager managed city versus a strong mayor city? That's what I want to be careful of.
At the end of the day, it functionally speaking, probably doesn't matter so much because the council has to confirm it. So, but I'll leave that up to you. Like I said, we looked at past practice to try and determine what the city had done, either by past practice or custom. And we couldn't locate one, we couldn't locate an instance in which it was clear to us who made the appointment. Because I think functionally, they're likely brought forward on an agenda and then the city council just discusses and approves.
And so in this instance, we have two qualified, highly qualified candidates. And I know that in other things, when we had to appoint somebody for different things and there was more than one candidate, we actually did this process, not for the LDFA, but like to replace someone on this council, for example. And so, given that you're uncomfortable with the mayor and the manager interviewing people, I'm uncomfortable with just the manager interviewing people and making a recommendation. I think this is fraught and could easily be seen as a, you know, a way to set somebody up. And I think that this, if our candidates are amenable to this, I don't see how this violates anything. And then where we could all hear what their thoughts are on these questions that we have and make a determination. And then if Marcus has to, I don't see how that could be a bad thing to have us all get more information.
It's not whether it's a bad thing or not. It's that there's a process set up, it's statutory, it's by law. And there have been, and there's been concern already, the processes aren't followed. It's just like our-
But there are differing opinions as to the process.
I'm sorry, if I could just finish one.
And our city attorney has determined what the-
If, if there is something that would make more common sense than what our charter says and we think it just makes more sense to do it, we don't have the right to change that process.
That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is we have an opinion, a legal opinion, by the city attorney that this process is within our rights. Or that we also have an opinion that the mayor, the chief executive, you disagree, but-
And the last thing I'll say, I'm not going to die on this hill. I'm saying if you want the public to trust us, you've got to let them know we're doing the right thing. And there is an element of trust that comes up, that it says on our website, as of this afternoon, that the manager makes the decision. And that's unilaterally changed and I didn't know about it and none of the other four of you knew about it. Whether it was right, wrong, or indifferent, it has an element to raise trust as an issue. When you're telling me I have a legal opinion from my attorney on an issue, again, this has always been one of my complaints. Don't surprise us right here when we have to make a decision, okay? My reading, and I am an attorney and I'm a council member sitting here, so I'm putting my council hat on, when it says mayor or manager, that is in relation to cities that are a strong mayor and mayor-led cities versus manager-led cities. That, to me, is clear. I understand he's saying it's not clear. I disagree with that from the plain English reading of that. So I'm not going to go on any further with it. I'm saying if we want to address proper process, if we want to make sure the public doesn't think things are happening on the fly, being changed on the fly, then we should probably let the process fall. Because all it would take is for us to put it on the next agenda and to have a name proposed to us to propose. So I just want to make sure we're following.
All right, so this evening, I would propose that we table this discussion. I think that there needs to be more clarification about the change and communication with the council about how or why it was changed so that we all understand it going into the next meeting. What else would we seek to know? That, I would ask that if it is determined that it's the city manager who makes the, does the interview and makes the recommendation, that we, as a council, we can, can we appoint a committee to be part of that instead of it just saying the mayor and Marcus? That from us, we ask for a couple of people, it can only be two.
Here's why I'm smiling, council member, is because coming in tonight, having heard from a couple of the LDFA members saying to me, well, can't we be part of this process? And I thought that was a great idea. So I thought part of our conversation tonight was going to be, do we want to involve the current LDFA board members in the process?
I think that would be important.
Well, it is, but that kind of threw me when I saw this too. Because I was like, I don't know that we have the authority to do it. I think it is too. But I don't, that's where I think, as a mayor, I think to table it and get clarification so we're doing it the right way, so that people that have been affected by this know that we're following the right process in doing it.
I do like the idea of a subcommittee with LDFA members, with council members, and the two candidates.
Yes, yes. Are we also asking for a legal opinion when you say about getting clarification?
So I did, I would like to see the legal opinion too, because we've had several of these conversations. And, you know, the conversation between two lawyers is absolutely enthralling. But I would like a longer, a longer, more thoughtful opinion from the lawyer so that it's clear.
Yep.
And ahead of time, so we can get time to read it.
Yes.
Yeah, and I know we can only deal with one specific thing at a time, but I think specifically, yeah. I would like to have a closed session and hear the legal opinion from our lawyer.
Okay.
On this specific clarification.
So if we're asking for a legal opinion in closed session, how are we going to be bringing this back to our next meeting?
If I, what I would do is make a motion to table this, to be able to make sure we're following the process. I don't think the legal opinion has to be a closed session legal opinion.
Okay, I agree.
So I think we can take the input from the city attorney and decide what we want to do. The key will be is that if the manager is interviewing the two candidates, I'm not sure that in that process, the manager couldn't decide to involve the LDFA board members or have it in a, as long as the two candidates are open to it, to do it in a setting where other people can participate in it. My memory, and again, this is very different than appointing a new council member to a different board. However, my memory is whenever we did anything in the past, it would be an agenda and the public gave input. I can remember when I went on the CWTA where people stood up and spoke.
I do remember that. Marcus, did you want to add something?
I do. If city council is going to request for the legal opinion to be shared as a part of a public, as part of your public session, Mike might want to give guidance tonight or guidance at that next meeting, but council will need to waive that privilege. So I don't know, Mike, how you want to, if you want them to wait.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't want them to waive ahead of time until they've had an opportunity to read it.
Right.
Okay, so you would still go into a closed session, you would see it, and then you would waive?
Yeah, I don't know that it's, I don't know, I don't think it's necessary. I mean, I can certainly provide it early and then the city can decide what it wants to do with it.
Tell me what that looks like.
So your next meeting is?
The second, I think.
So we can probably get that to you a week in advance of that meeting and then the city can decide whether or not it wants to adjourn to closed session or waive privilege.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I just wanted to seek some clarification on that, so that we had it before our next meeting.
Yes.
Okay, so that we can move forward with this.
Yeah.
So.
So I'll do the motion to table this.
That's right.
I'll second it.
Yes. Yes, we had a motion. Steve, support?
Yeah, I supported it.
We have a clear motion.
Oh, wait.
To, to table this item on the process of the appointment of candidates for the LDFA board and pending legal opinion that's been requested from our council.
Second.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alambas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Fokens?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, now we have an appointment this evening, or reappointment.
It's being recommended to approve the reappointment of David Bunce to the City of Cadillac-Clamlake Joint Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on November 18th, 2027.
I'd make a motion to approve the reappointment of David Bunce to the City of Cadillac-Clamlake Joint Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on November 18th, 2027.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Alambas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Fokens?
Yes, motion carries. Okay. We have to adopt an ordinance to amend some sections of a couple of codes.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Before you, again, is a request to adopt an ordinance that would amend sections 46-4, 46-186, and 46-216 of the city's code of ordinances. This item was before city council previously and ultimately was remanded back to the planning commission for them to have further discussion and analysis. Our community development director, John Wallace, will be sharing that information. John, you here?
Good evening. Basically, these zoning ordinance amendments, the first one was just to change the definition of bed and breakfast to define what it was. The second two pieces were to add to the RM1 and the RM2 under the special use sections to allow bed and breakfast to be considered as a special land use in the RM1 and RM2. That does not necessarily mean they would always be approved in those districts, but would create a pathway where they could be evaluated by the planning commission and acted upon based on the special land use standards for the bed and breakfast. You have before you, I think in your packet, there was a number of questions raised with respect to getting a response from the planning commission. I can even, I can either walk through those or, I don't know, if you want me to read through them and spend that time or just, the mayor was at that meeting, myself was at that meeting. We had the attorney at that meeting as well.
I think if you would step through them, that would be helpful for everyone to hear that.
Okay, the first question was, "Request planning commission to provide city council a summary and history of why a textual zoning change to two districts is required for accommodating the use for one house. When the city received an inquiry concerning a possible bed and breakfast use, the city staff researched potentially appropriate areas for this land use. Staff determined that RM1 and RM2 are potentially suitable districts, given that they allow for more intensive multifamily uses such as offices, family and group shelters, multifamily homes, and in the RM2, mobile home parks. The purpose was not solely to accommodate one interested applicant, but rather to update the zoning ordinance to allow for this use where suitable, and that was chosen to be done by district."
If, if we can take these one at a time to ask John questions on that?
That's okay.
I guess what I was thinking on that one, which might even be a simpler question, is the history of if it was a bed and breakfast before, how was it a bed and breakfast before that led us into this?
I'm not sure we can determine how it was, how it was approved as a bed and breakfast. We could go back, I think, we found records where the, where the, I think it was done by special use permit, which we're opposing again. And I think we did find that it was revoked as well. And that's why the focus on trying to create a pathway again, because once it was revoked, it would have stayed with the land and been able to be done without a reapproval if they had never revoked it. And I'm not even sure why they revoked it. But that's, that's where that's at.
And the last part of that, John, is if it was approved, are we missing something that they simply don't have to reapply for it there now? That was my question, to see if it had been approved before, which we all know it was-
I think it was the revocation which caused us to do it.
So you actually found evidence that it was-
Evidence that the planning commission took action to revoke it. Now, it didn't, I don't think it specified that they were doing it for some inappropriate action or merely that somebody quit doing it and so they thought it was a good idea just to terminate it, to run with the land.
And again, this is for us to get the historical part. In a situation where special uses are allowed and then one landowner may have it revoked, it doesn't stop another person from buying for, reapplying for a special use. Is that something that could be done here, especially- Is that something that could be done here, especially 'cause we don't see that anything egregious had occurred which resulted in the revocation? So, in other words, could we simply, if you find the history, have Mr. Holic reapply for a special use as a B and B here, as it was historically before, and then?
Like, is it grandfathered?
Exactly.
Yeah, I think, I think that was the concern that, that John, and, you know, the department had, was that they didn't see that use expressly permitted in the, in the list of uses.
Uh-huh.
That would be, might be.
There's, there's been times when we've considered for special use something very similar that's identified, but if there's not something that's pretty closely tied to that particular use, we feel like we're reaching too far out on a limb to let people apply for things that aren't specifically stated. And that was the thought. And, Mike, I think you had reviewed this too, if I'm not mistaken, but you, you looked at the fact it was revoked, and you thought that that required it to, to reapply.
Yes. Which, which reapply, but did you see a block? And, and again, I'm asking this as a question, if it was approved previously and there was, it's not revoked because, um, it was specifically excluded. If it was just revoked for whatever reason or condition there, and there's nothing egregious, would there be any problem with it being reapplied for that, uh, property and going through the special use process to approve it again?
I don't, I don't believe so, except to the extent that the ordinance did not, um, expressly provide for that as a land use permitted by special use permit, right? So, uh, zoning ordinances are permissive, meaning that if it's not in there, generally speaking, it's prohibited. So, that's why in those specific dif- districts, because you couldn't possibly name every potential land use for every district it is, unless it's permitted, it's prohibited. So, in that case, if you wanted to allow bed and breakfast as a special use, then you should amend the ordinance to provide for that land use. Of course, nothing requires you to do it either, um, it's a legislative decision of the city council.
Is it, Mike, a spot zoning? If that house was permitted to be a bed and breakfast in the past, and we see no reason that it was revoked for a defarious activity, that it couldn't go through and the planning commission and the, uh, council, uh, with public input, couldn't approve that special use again?
Yeah, I'd, I'd want to take a look at the ordinance again, but I think the problem is you would be permitting a use by special use permit that is not actually permitted in that district by special use.
Okay, but we'd have to look at that.
Yeah, and then it becomes problematic. It's like, you know, granting approval of a use in a residential district that's not permitted, whatever that use might be, and then that becomes problematic.
And I think, and councilmember, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong in what you're, you're trying to correlate. Mike, I think part of that is if, if there, is there some grandfathering concept legally, given that it had that use previously?
There would have been if they, let's suppose the city had many years ago issued a special land use permit, and then amended the ordinance, um, to now exclude that use from that zoning district, but the property had been used for that all along. Then, it would constitute a legal nonconforming use that could continue, subject to the rules applicable to nonconforming uses. But here, as I understand it, permit was revoked, property was not being used for that, which, at least in my mind, is a manifest intent to discontinue that use, and so any future uses have to conform with whatever regulations apply to that district, unless you change the regulations, which is a legislative decision.
And we also wanted to clarify where we could consider it, 'cause if we did it by special use without being named, then we can conceivably consider it in a single-family district by special use without being named, and then we would be broadening the scope, and we didn't want to do that. We wanted to be more deliberate about where it would be an appropriate use.
And it would always, it would always have to, this is simply opening the, the process of opening, adding, adding the bed and breakfast in there as a use. But, if anyone else was looking at doing a bed and breakfast, they would have to go through this entire process. So, it's not like, you know, if this bed and breakfast i- is approved here, or this, this is approved here, it's not simply opening the floodgates that anybody can open a bed and breakfast in, in this, these areas. It still has to go through the planning commission process.
Even for the one property?
Even this one?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, this is simply allowing him to bring it forward.
And when we talk about, um, making the process explicit, I think too, um, when you look at the other special land uses permitted, recreational activities, offices, businesses, um, business dwelling mix, family shelter, group shelter, um, mobile home parks, um, et cetera, this just adds another use that can be.
Possible.
Put in through a, through a special use permit. Um, and I think it would be sort of contradictory to say, well, can't we just do a special use without it being one of the listed special uses? So, I'm, I think, this makes a lot of sense. It doesn't mean all of a sudden there's going to be a flood of bed and breakfast. It means that we are making this a legal use to be able to apply for a special use permit. And then, that's when, once that permit is applied for, that's when the neighbors are contacted, that's when it's, you know, everybody has a say in whether or not this is a good spot for it, and then it can be approved or not.
In the planning commission, I mean, they reaffirmed, based on the questions that came back to them. You know, they reaffirmed the decision that they made, um, so they were very thoughtful in that process. And this simply now allows the process to happen by which the doors opened, and if he continues to move forward with it, then those contacts are made to the neighbors, and we start the whole process all over again.
Should I continue?
Sure.
Question two, provide a summary of all potential options available to accommodate this request, and why these changes to two zoning districts are needed to accomplish it. Uh, and the response was, beyond a text amendment, a property owner should request, could request rezoning to TS one or TS two where tourist homes and short-term rentals are permitted. However, this could result in spot zoning, and it does not address the larger picture of providing a place, uh, parentheses, one or more districts where B and Bs are suitable. And, you know, whenever you're talking about spot zoning, it's always challengeable whether, um, it could be spot zoning or it isn't spot zoning. We do have a couple small pieces of land that are zone TS one or two that were approved at some point in the past. I don't know when, but, um, they were small enough that they could have been challenged with spot zoning. But, at other times, if you can put out a sufficient rationale, maybe you can defend it as not being spot zoning. It was just that it opened that door, it opened that door to that, and you would look at the down, an area near downtown and say, there's no other TS one or two districts anywhere close to it. Why are we, why are we doing that right there at that one spot? So, uh, it just seemed like a more logical thing to do by doing it by district and by special use.
Is, is this one, is there a reason why we don't have the option of an overlay? And I think specifically of even what we just did with the apartments that we approved, we did the downtown pud versus the outlying pud, as to why an overlay along that area wouldn't be a better method, uh, for, uh, the special use for a B and B, rather than changing all of the RM one, RM two?
Well, you, you could do an overlay. The problem with an overlay is for us to know in advance so much about the housing stock that we knew where some of these situations already existed. Uh, it would be very difficult to know in advance, were there homes that were designed to be bed and breakfasts and so forth? And it would largely, uh, I know to some degree we're picking where it's appropriate by doing it by district, but by doing it by overlay, then you also have the choice of having to decide between multiple districts. And, and that becomes problematic because there could be a lot of challenges to that. Like, one of the key areas that you would normally do this is in your historic single-family districts. But, there has been a history of not wanting to do any more intensive use in single-family districts. So, that's one of the things that might have gone into an overlay, was to do it over the historic single-family district. And we decided not to do that because we thought there would be more opposition to that.
In, in this case, I'm just going to use an example from Prospect down from Division over to, uh, is it Chapin first or Stimson first? I forget. We do know that this house and some of the other houses may have fallen into this category in the history. What would be the difficulty of doing an overlay from that down to the downtown area? We know the history of the houses there.
Well, I guess it comes down to the, the, the different areas that you might consider, and where, where would those start and stop? And picking, giving more, more people rights or less people rights. Whereas if you do it by district, it's all based upon the intensity and activity of the use, so you can make sure that that's compatible.
But, but could we do it here, because we do know there was a B and B here.
You could do it.
Close to the downtown.
It would, it would be very challenging, and it might be subject to a lot more pushback perhaps.
If I can, if I can add in just a couple of, couple of comments, right? So, I think there's, you know, listening to the, listening to John's brief and councilmember, listening to your questions, I see a bigger policy question that is kind of out there, potentially, right? And so, the policy question that I see is, you know, whether or not, you know, you're looking at identifying, regardless of what the underlying zoning is, a very specific geographic area, as councilmember King just said, you know, within this certain boundary adjacent to your downtown, and you literally take a highlighter out, or you take, you know, a pen out, and you circle that area. I, I, I think that, um, well, I shouldn't say I think, I know.
It is an overlay.
Yeah, you can, you can create that. I believe then, by right, those properties within that area would, would be able to use them as a, uh, short-term rental. It doesn't go back to planning commission, is that correct, on that? Like, you wouldn't do a special use permit if, if it's allowed via an overlay, is that where it ends, or can you still?
The over, if you're going to create an overlay, it's got to go back to the planning commission.
No, to create the overlay.
Yep.
But, once it's created, if your property is within that overlay area, and you want to come to the city and say?
You could still require it by?
Special use.
Special use.
Or, or you could, or you could set the standards, and if they meet those standards, you could, uh, permit it by right.
Yep.
But, so, one of the, just so I understand, one of the options could be that we do a special overlay for B and B being a special use in a designated area that this, that this property is in, correct?
That is an option.
Okay, that, and that's what I wanted to know. I wanted to know what our options were.
And the planning commission thought that that was not the best idea, or a slightly dangerous idea, because?
Starting out, it would probably take a lot, a lot more effort, pro- likely. And, for instance, how much of the area around the site that was proposed, would you include? You wouldn't want to do, if you, if you did an overlay for that one property, you might be back to questioning spot zoning again through overlay. Uh, not, maybe not, but it certainly raises that, that challenge. You'd probably want to develop one area, or multiple areas of, not probably more than one property, if you thought there was more than one area suited for it.
Wouldn't it be easier to do an overlay than change all the zoning for everybody in all of RM one and RM two, especially when we've heard the concerns of people who are in those areas who don't want this? And if we were going to do an overlay, you already know the history of those homes and can, uh, lay it out?
Well, actually, we don't. We would have to do a lot of homework, a lot of research, we'd have to ask a lot of questions.
How's that different than recommending all of RM one and RM two then?
Because?
One second, you get back to my question of the people that have voiced that they don't want this. And, and you're saying you don't want to do the work here as far as the textual change to do an overlay, but, eh, even though we haven't talked to everybody, and there's been public opinion that they didn't want those areas done, we heard Mr. Markord, I think it was, the last meeting was in RM, saying this isn't something. I don't see how it's more work, and if it's an option that's less, uh, negative on all, it's better. And, that's why I wanted to know whether it was an option or not. I don't see the difficulty.
It also changes the basic way that you do planning and zoning, which is?
You've offered overlays before as an option to us.
Right, but the most standard way to consider uses such as this in this condition would be by district. Overlay is usually something that you would use for access control, where you could lay the overlay over the entire corridor that has multiple districts and say, within this corridor, we're going to have this regulation governing how many driveways you can have. That would be a perfect use for an overlay district.
You know, also, you, like, the gentleman that we heard from, um, that was in RM one, I mean, lives in an apartment complex, 'cause that's what goes in RM one, is apartment complexes. And if someone's asking, you know, should this go here? I think the question that I'm, I'm asking is, look at the, look at how, what are, RM one is, what RM two is, what's it for, what's that list looks like, look like? Um, when you look at this house, for instance, not to get back into the specific house, but it's right next to an insurance, um, agency, it used to be the chiropractor, um, it's right across from Kirkland Terrace. Um, like, these, you, I, I don't look at the RM one and ask, should, should, you know, the RM one does need to be zoned correctly, but I, I, when I look at our RM one, I do think it's zoned correctly. The next thing I look at is the list of RM one uses, and a bed and breakfast seems to be one of the least offensive of these uses i- in this RM one, which is meant to be multifamily homes and a barrier between our sing- single-family neighborhoods and our, um, business districts, you know? So, it, so it, it seems to, it seems to make sense. I've not heard from anybody in the RM one, um, district. I've not heard from any of, of the neighbors, you know, in these. I've, I've not heard anybody tell me why it doesn't, um, make sense to include, um, bed and breakfast on the list of allowable uses, um, in RM one and RM two. And, and what you suggested a little bit ago about an overlay, you know, that includes, you know, the Prospect, you know, Chapin, um, you know, now you're into the R three, uh, neighborhoods, and, you know, I mentioned Luddington, um, has a nice stretch of hi- historic homes down the main Luddington Avenue with neighborhoods behind them, and, and they did pick their, um, you know, highlight bed and breakfast as part of their historic neighborhoods that way. But I don't, I don't think that's what, um, you know, I don't think that's the conversation that the people want to be having, that the planning commission wants to be having. Um, and I think it's a much easier, now you can say it's less work, maybe we need to be doing it more work. I, I think even if you do have an overlay that includes R three, which I think is a bad idea, it's hard to argue that, um, a bed and breakfast use doesn't make sense, um, in the list of approved uses in, in RM one and RM two. And, and I think one of the better parts about it, um, especially in, in the climate, is we are allowing it with the special use permit process. So, um, the neighbors do get letters sent out. You, you do get a chance to say, this makes no sense, um, I don't, I don't want this here. So, you know, I've, the, the conversations with, with people, um, you know, to back you up a little bit, Steve, are, are, you know, asking how we're going to enforce it, can we enforce it, why are we adding? You know, when we just got done, you know, having how many Airbnbs and just got done shutting them down, why are we now expanding, um, uses again, you know? And that, and that's a valid, um, conversation that I've been having with a lot of people. But nobody's really saying this use doesn't belong in RM two, this use doesn't belong next to group homes. This, uh, bed and breakfast don't belong next to Kirkland Terrace and State Farm Insurance Agency. Nobody's, uh, making those arguments.
And, and I think, just where you said that, councilmember Ingalls, I agree with a lot of what you're saying, but the RM one up East Division goes, and of course, my old eyes can't do it, but it goes all the way up. I guess it's. It's East Cass Street, I'm sorry, East Harris Street, and what we're talking about here. And what we're talking about here has RM1. So, it'd be easy to do an overlay on that without hitting the other sections and without changing it for the whole city. So, it's not spot, but it's saying, and it makes sense because of what you said, because we had the bed and breakfast there. We have other non-RM3 or RM, I'm sorry, RM1 or RM2 in that. So, it fits and it does what we want it to do without changing everything with the unintended consequence of the effects on others. And I'm just saying, I don't see an overlay as any more work as changing all of it.
Do you, like, so when I watched the last two Planning Commissions though, because this is also a little bit of a concern, is that, you know, we're not the, the Planning Commission. I know we have the final say, but I do think they do a lot of hard work and, and ask these questions. And, you know, I think what, what you're saying to the Planning Commission is that the reasons for not offering us up an overlay or for not doing the work and coming up with a second option, it, you know, are, are not good enough.
Well, no-
The reasons for not presenting us with that.
Please, please don't say that in the sense that's not what I'm doing. As a matter of fact, maybe the, the mayor can, can enlighten us. And two of the other commission members that I just asked, "Was overlay considered?", they said, "We were just told it would be too complicated and, and it wouldn't be practical." And, and that's as far as that discussion on that option went. Am I incorrect on that, Mayor?
No, I think that, you know, in the past, we've been, we've been criticized for spot zoning. And so, I think that, um, the, the planning, yeah, the Planning Commission, looked at it from the perspective that, um, with all of the additional uses that were out there, that it just made sense. And, and as I say, it's like, it's simply opening the door for that one property. But, anybody coming into one of the RM1 or RM2 areas in the future will have to go through a very stringent process for it even to be considered. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Were there any more questions that you had?
Well, there were two more.
Why don't we go ahead and finish them?
Uh, question three. Provide input from direct feedback gathered by city staff from residents and property owners in these districts across the city and explore the need to do it all across the RM1 and RM2 districts or just the area of this particular property. Uh, and the response was the Planning Commission's consensus was that the appropriate time and manner to get feedback is when a property owner applies for the special land use permit for a B and B land use. At that time, notice will be published and mailed to the neighbors, who will then have an opportunity to submit a written comment or speak at the public hearing. And the final question was, "Request a summary from staff on specific enforcement rules and provisions for this property? How these rules will be adopted?" Uh, will it be by special use permit? I think the answer to that would be yes. "Who, who is responsible to enforce any future non-compliance and the specific penalties for non-compliance?" And on this last one, um, the Planning Commission's consensus was that property-specific rules will be imposed at the special land use approval phase. Violations of the special land use permit can lead the Planning Commission to revoking the special land use permit following notice on a hearing, as it has done in the past for special land use permit violations in other contexts. And the Planning Commission has just recently done that with another one that they issued several months ago. All right, thank you.
If I can just add one thing for City Council as you continue your deliberations. There perhaps are some instances where City Council can, you know, take a recommendation from another board, modify and then approve as modified. If it's the City Council's determination that you would rather see this as an overlay, uh, it would not be able to be modified and then approved tonight. You would need to remand it back, uh, to the Planning Commission and then they would go through, um, a, a public noticing process accordingly for that change. So, just, just a procedural update. And, I mean, this is, this is really, uh, you know, within Council's bailiwick in terms of, of what you guys would like to do, so.
So, I'm a, I'm a former Planning Commissioner. That was one of my first things for the city, um, was being on the Planning Commission. And when I was a Commissioner, I took advantage of, um, an education series for Planning Commissioners and went, drove over to Manistee once a week for ten weeks, um, for trainings. And in that, one of the things that I learned is that the less convoluted your zoning is, like with overlays, et cetera, et cetera, um, the more easy, the easier it is for, um, for developers, citizens, everybody else to know what's going on and to know what's allowable and thereby reduce the number of violations. And so, um, in, with what I have learned, um, and, um, and what the, the Planning Commission has recommended and then reviewed and recommended again, um, I believe that the best way to deal with this is through adding it as a special use in those two, in those two zones. And so, I will make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance to amend Section forty-six four, forty-six dash one eighty-six and forty-six dash two sixteen of the Code of Ordinance. Okay. Then I guess it's gonna have to go back to the Planning Commission.
Um, is it just that simple or do you need to have?
Well, I think-
They're gonna wanna know why it's coming back.
Correct. Yep. With some, um, instructions, directions on what the Planning Commission should, um, review or consider.
I still am not convinced that this won't be a good proposal, but I think we need to know what the overlay option is. We, we can't just hear, "It's too much work or it's gonna be too difficult." We need to know how it can be done so that we can weigh it. If both options had come up to us, we could've debated and come up and approved one and not the other. And this is in no way minimizing the work of the, uh, Planning Commission. But, I'm not sure it was thoroughly, the overlay was thoroughly vetted out for this. And that, that's my reservation in this situation.
I guess the Planning Commission is, um, looking for guidance. The only thing I would, I would say, the only thing that gave me, gave me pause sometimes is, um, some of the RM1 that does cut into the neighborhood by the courthouse. Um, a downtown, um, overlay of, of the RM1 district, maybe even more, more restrictive. Um, and then if they, if they make the case for, um, you know, a block or two of the R3 district, they're gonna have to make that case, um, so.
If I, again, we'll just throw this out. If, if what, you know, City Council would ultimately like to see is, is us taking a stab of drawing that circle, whether it's in the downtown area of the city or others, where we think that this use would be appropriate and presumably, again, through a special use permitting process, but done as an overlay, not really focusing on what the underlying zoning is. I think, I think that's what I'm hearing. We could do that and then present that to the Planning Commission as an alternative to say, you know, "Here's two or three areas, whatever the number is, within the city, where, you know, given geographic proximity to the lake, to downtown and to whatever else it is that we identify, um, you know, as, as good reasons, here's, here's an overlay and then it might be different zones."
I, I, again, to make it easier for the Planning Commission, I don't think we have to include other zones other than the RM1 downtown. Because if we take the RM1 from the block that we're talking about, that's on the south side of Cass Street, and then we take that corridor down, don't quote me 'cause my eyes, I think it, down Park Street through the RM1 that's downtown there, that, that can be looked at.
You're saying Cass and Park Street?
Look, I'm, I'm sorry, Marcus, but look right here. This is RM1.
Right.
Right there. So, you don't have to even include any other zones.
I, I guess, you know, just, and I'm not pushing back in a negative way, just a question, but, you know, why, why wouldn't we wanna look at anything on the west side or anything, you know, anywhere else? There could be homes that could be very suitable. I don't, I don't know if there are or not. I'm just throwing that out there for discussion purposes.
And, and my thought is because RM1's been part of the subject, that, that makes it easy? That covers this area? And if we wanna change something beyond that later, we're able to do that.
I mean, my, my only experience with this, or, or that I can recall, um, since I've been on Council has been the marijuana shops. And I know we did a good job with the rules downtown where the doors had to go off the back end. We did a good job shifting a block or two so it was further away from Lincoln School. You know, so I don't, um, doubt that we, that we can't come up with a good plan this way. But, you know, just like I said last time, we're not trying to waste anybody's time in the Planning Commission. Um, we may end up right back where we started, um, taking option A and changing, changing the definitions for RM1. So, um, I just wanted to say that as well.
I would agree with your comments.
Okay.
So, is that satisfactory, you mean?
No, you should probably, um, by motion, um, uh, direct it back to the Planning Commission with those directives on what you expect the Planning Commission to do.
I'll make a motion that this go back to the Planning Commission to look at the action of an overlay for special use of bed and breakfast for the RM1 district that's downtown, that it appears the southern border is on Harris Street and the northern border is around North Street.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Alabas.
Yes.
Ingles.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Filkins.
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, this evening, we do have in our packets minutes, uh, from the last, uh, LDFA, uh, meeting. So, for your review, um, as you can. And then, at this time, we'll open the floor for our second public comment. Rules the same as the first, please.
Hi, Andrew again. I appreciate the many comments that have been made tonight that in, is encouraging the Council to show us the processes behind decisions made. Um, I appreciate the effort made to encourage heightened communication. He- sorry, heightened communication. Um, it means a lot. It, it, it really does. I, um, but really, it means a lot. Thank you. I see your efforts and it is encouraging to see. So, riding on that wave of encouragement, I have some suggestions to make. Um, I spoke with Mayor Filkins and Mr. Dietlin in October after a council meeting and we had, like, discussed future steps that could possibly made, could possibly be made by the Council, to, just as an example, uh, require realtors to inform pers- prospective home buyers about possible PFA contamination, ordinance changes that require new home buyers to connect to city water after purchase, plans to establish a payment plan for connecting to city water for those who don't have the ability to monetarily afford to obtain clean drinking water. Has there been any forward motion regarding these changes? It- In- So, just, that's a thought, um. In, uh, at the town hall, when, um, the, uh, main speaker, I believe her name was Mrs. Neeld? I, I wasn't sure which, what her name was, um, at the, where she, when she was talking about the beginning. She was talking about the reluctance of homebu- homeowners, um, to test their private wells um, due to their concern for lowering their prop- property value. And I think that's something that you guys can, um, help with, calm people down, that it, it, it really doesn't affect, uh, home prices. Um, down in Rockford, as the, uh, lady said at the town hall, um, housing prices didn't change. Um, I know in my sister's, uh, neighborhood, houses are going for good prices. So, um, I think if you could do a little research and just come out with a statement that, hey, this isn't something that will affect, affect you monetarily, um, I think that would go, um, that would help a lot. Also, um, I found that there is a, uh, Great Lakes PFA summit being held virtually on December third to the fifth. Uh, there is an agenda already laying out a variety of very educational seminars regarding industrial regulations, examples of how other states are dealing with this emerging problem. And there's like participation from like ten different countries. They have experts from across the country speaking on this issue. It costs thirty-five dollars per person.
Thank you.
Sorry, Audrey Wood, to pick up where she left off. Um, it's thirty-five dollars per person, um, for regular people, not for government officials. So, I, I believe you guys are free. But, um, I would suggest that you guys do it. I'm sure it's gonna be very informational and very helpful in understanding the severity of the situation. I found out this afternoon, listening to an audio, um, file, that the LDFA has not been using their bylaws. And, um, that's on you guys, 'cause you guys are supposed to be overseeing them, right? Where are you guys with it? Why, why, why is this being allowed? Where's their website? Do they have a website? I, I'm, I'm struggling to find information online, um, to research numbers, anything actually, um. There is a link on the, or there, I'm not sure if there is currently. It just linked to itself though on the city website, so, um. Also during that meeting, it was requested that more decision-making power on when or if to test wells for the LDFA be given to a singular individual instead of the LDFA board. As the City Council has a responsibility to be informed, I would like to share my concern that more decision-making power should not be granted to a person who has specifically told people that there was no PFAS in Cadillac, that, that has told Eagle that there is no need for further testing past the LDFA area or zone despite evidence suggesting otherwise. Luckily, Eagle has had further contact with concerned citizens who took it upon themselves to reach out, to initiate further testing. There's been failure to follow the simple bylaws and they're supposedly have been doing this for thirty years. So, when did, when did it break down? Why did it break down? What else has broken down that we don't know about? And please don't let one person make unilateral decisions when they have already put my family at risk. I understand that everybody's, uh, head is gonna be focused on PFAS all the time. I, I don't blame you. There's other stuff going on in the world. So, please understand that I get that. I have other stuff going on in my life too, a lot of other stuff. But, um, this, this is important too.
Thank you.
I'm gonna continue to ask that you support a message to test what, private wells. Up and down the Clam River, there's houses right and left with private wells. They have not been tested. That's the next shoe to fall. It's what's going on over there where-
It's what's going on over there, where it came from, there, where it ended up, out at CTC, John R., Meyer Road, Meyer Street, whatever, the horseshoe across from Baker. Speaking of Baker, the statute indicates that a member is supposed to be appointed by a junior college or community college. I wonder if Baker should be putting a person on the LDFA. There is one member that's not been attending, told you she can't come, doesn't want to, or don't plan on her being present. You've got basically two open seats if you wanted to. There, there's no requirement that the city manager sits on that board either. You could remove him. Uh, I would ask that you consider citizens, uh, private citizens, not elected officials, but, or hired people from the city on that board anymore. So I did apply. I appreciate the conversation tonight. And, uh, my read was from the website. I applied. Marcus makes the decision. Marcus knows Mike and I inside and out. He could make that decision. He could have made it by now. And it should, that's how I would have been fine with if he did that. And, uh, it wasn't made. We're both here for a nerve-wracking interview in front of the entire community. It didn't need to happen. I gotta ask, how many of these members? There's six members sitting on the LDFA right now that weren't appointed right. There have to be, 'cause eh, uh, there's no process where the mayor made the appointment. And the city ma- city council approved it. It's never happened. And to change the website, the day of the interviews, pretty awful. Today, hours before, you guys have to get your house in order. Where was your lawyer for this? How did that remain on your website for so many years? Were your profit, processes a joke? He shows up today with advice, you guys gotta do this stuff in advance somehow. And it shouldn't be in a closed session, you're. I'm protesting the process that you had today. You guys need to figure out your issues. I don't care if it's a public meeting that I'm interviewed with, uh, if you want to do that at any time. It's not fair to drag in the entire council for something that is someone else's job. I would submit to you that's Mr. Petch's job. You could have dealt with this. I don't agree with Mr. Homier's view. I'm d- at the past practice, doesn't go that way. Uh, it's just another example of the LDFA. You heard a vanilla version tonight from Mr. Barbieri. The LDFA is out of compliance and has been for four years. They haven't done quarterly tests, four years. And they want to shut down things. Think about it, guys. None, not one test in four years. Your lawyer, your city manager, your consultant, they all know the federal rules. The feds let you walk on it. So did Eagle, who's just supervising and helping.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett.
Thank you.
I'm Steve Pivarsky. I live over on North Boulevard. Um, first of all, I want to, uh, let you know, I appreciate you guys doing a little bit of extra work to get this, uh, bed and breakfast thing done right. Um, that's why we, that's why we like you to, to be comprehensive and do a careful and complete job with things. Um, another thing is something that hasn't been brought up. I don't know if other people are noticing it, but I've seen these little glass tubes lying around that people buy their joints in from the, from the marijuana shops in three different places in town. And I think something needs to be done before this becomes another PFA type of deal. I mean, I, I put one in my car to, that I found, I was going to show my wife. By the time I got home, it was broken and glass was laying around in my car. They're very delicate. Kids are going to be getting the glass in their feet and whatever. But I think this needs to be looked into. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Olson again, and I just want to say I'm sorry, uh, that I clapped my hands when you were, uh, going off on the mayor. I'll let you know, I spent over twenty-eight years in the military. There is an executive bench, and that is the mayor. She runs the city. The city manager controls everything and lets her know about it. You all are council members. You'd be like a congress. She says you approve or don't approve. She is the boss. I'd be like the president, whether you like him or not, that's the way it is. Please. Yell at me if you pl- I want to, I don't care. I've been yelled at all my life, so that's, I'm used to. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Rick Torres, Cadillac, Michigan. Could have saved herself a lot of time tonight. When you found out about that, Marcus, I would have requested of the mayor to take it off the agenda tonight. So as not to take up as much time as we did debating what it was we were debating, actually. I'm still not certain exactly where we are with that, but it might have helped. He said, I didn't have any time. I found out just before the meeting. Have a quick word. Take it off the agenda. Save it for another time. At a previous meeting, I talked about a, a home, a house on Cass and Division. Right on that intersection. It's still listed. I brought it to the council's attention. I, I don't recall the name of it, but I just brought, I mean, the, the street address. I want to say it's seven oh three or something like that. It might be five oh three. I'm not sure. It's a big brick house, got a big porch, right on that Y interstate where East Division comes off and then Cass meets East Division. The bottom line with everything we're discussing tonight is what you do for us. You're the government, I said this once before. For the, by the people, for the people. The people have spoken. We can't get them all in here. I've spoken to many people about short-term rentals, bed and breakfasts. The result is virtually the same. The opinions are the same. They don't want them. There was a time when Carol Potter used to come to me when I worked at the state park and asked me if the park was full, and I'd say yes. She'd say, good. We can now fill the rest of our hotels. 'Cause they won't be able to get a site at the state park. Cadillac campground was full too, I told her. So was Birchwood. And she's like, excellent. Some of our hotels are shutting down. One final thought. All these people, these young girls here, their water is contaminated. They've been drinking it. The one Anderson fellow, he's at high risk. Nobody told him. We've got homeowners using True Green contaminating our lake with fertilizers. Enough fertilizer in that lake to fertilize, I forget how many football fields it is. We have so much milfoil in that lake, it's gotten out of hand. People are ignoring signs that say do not swim in the water. They still do. That's what the lake's for, right?
Thank you.
Gotta be aware.
I, I guess I was wrong. There, eh, must be a short-term rentals that's still out there that is advertising. Um, they, when you guys codified the zoning for the short-term rentals to TS one, TS two, B one and B two, the understanding was that you'd work on the zoning of everything else and then come back to that. So here we are, uh, we're, we're not really done with the zoning on everything else, so it's breaking the promise with us. Um, then, uh, you know, Nancy Reagan, just say no. That's another option. It would be a viable option. So, yeah, last thing is go Lions.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to good of the order, if anybody has anything this evening.
Nothing here.
Um, I would just like to, to say that, um, about the, the public forum meeting, um, both members of the city council and, um, members of the LDFA were advised to go and observe and let that be a time to listen to what the community was saying and to listen and learn from the experts. But not to participate because there was a quorum of us there. And it was not, um, it was not advertised as a public meeting. And so that, that is why I for one wasn't up speaking. I was there going. And that, and then there were things, questions that I needed, and then I did ask those questions of the individuals. But I really appreciate you guys getting up and asking a lot of the questions that I wanted to hear answers to. Um, I appreciate that. And also Mr. Barnett. So, um, it was, it was a wonderfully informative meeting. And those who were not there, I strongly recommend, um, viewing that meeting and, and learning about that stuff. So just wanted to let you know.
Well, I've changed my mind. It's a complex issue. We're, I think we're all still learning. That's why I went there. And I did learn quite a few things. And I did get there at five twenty.
Yeah.
I don't have anything else to do, so I get there early. But anyway, yes, we're all learning. It's complex. It's going to take time. Thank you for being so vocal. Thank you.
I wanted to re-highlight the, um, great opportunity that you guys pointed out. The, um, twenty twenty-four Great Lakes, um, PFAS summit, um, put on by Eagle is, as they said, December third, um, through fifth. It is, uh, virtual. It does go three days. It is thirty-five dollars for general admission and free for, um, local government officials, all government officials. Um, and I will be attending as much of that, or viewing as much of that as I can, um, when that comes, um, when that comes. And also, you know, uh, to Bill a- and you guys tonight, you know, it is, you know, the suggestions. A lot of times I'll get in, in, um, to conversations with people and, and a lot of it is about understanding what happened, understanding the past, um, understanding where the pollution came from. But I think anytime that you can make a suggestion, uh, going forward, and Bill's suggestions about helping as many people as, test as possible, or at least connecting them with those resources, I think that's something, um, we should put, you know, um, our, our, our money where our mouth is and put our money behind that. The, um, you know, we've, we've certainly all, um, expressed a favorable, uh, view on property assessments for, um, connecting people to city water who have a desire to but can't afford it. Again, I don't know if that's possible, um, but those are the roads we need to go down. And we only get started down that path, um, when, when we get good suggestions. So, um, thank you guys for coming and making those good suggestions.
Um, I thank everybody for their comments and Mr. Olson, who I think has left. But I think it's really, really important that people understand the charter of the city of Cadillac as to how things work, 'cause the charter is our bible of how we are to represent you and what actions we may take and not take. And I believe we've talked about it over and over, transparency is so critical. So critical. Section three point one of the charter says, and thi- this is from Mr. Olson's comment and no disparagement of the mayor, the mayor is not the boss of the council. Three point one says, and I quote, "The legislative authority of this city shall be vested in a council composed of five members, one of whom shall be the mayor." Period. "All members shall have equal authority." Period. There, not one of us is a boss. It goes on to say, and I quote, "The council shall be the governing body of the city and shall exercise all power conferred upon or possessed by the city by adoption of laws, comma, ordinances and resolutions, except as limited by this charter or state law." Period. That means not one of us is the boss to take action on our own. The next sentence is critical. "No individual council member shall on his own initiative issue orders to any city employee." We act as one voice. We govern together. We manage together. Not one of us has the right to act out on their own. Uh, in a moment, we'll, we'll be talking about some of the things for closed session, which I'll disagree with. Um, but I don't think we can go into closed session on a legal opinion that was asked by one member of the council and the rest of the council did not have input or decision-making process. And that also is expenditure of city resources, which we are not supposed to do unless we act as one. And I think that is critical. Um, in relation to our considerations of doing an evaluation, we have a policy and process which we established over the past several years through work session, which was public, and through city meetings. And that process is that each year we evaluate our manager. And we do it by, uh, each filling out an evaluation and sending it in to all council to see. And as, uh, council member Shippers pointed out, our process then has been adopted to say we then meet, confer about it and talk about it before we meet with Mr. Peshaw and move forward in that manner. I, I'm surprised that his evaluation is up today. I don't think it follows the policy or procedures we established as five of us. I think we need to follow that procedure. I agree with the mayor. If it's going to change, we need to do a work session. We need to have the same type of input that established this policy. But we don't go behind closed doors and change what our process is and hide that from the public and not have public input on it. I can say I've had numerous contacts of normal citizens and business leaders saying, there isn't any business that doesn't have yearly evaluations that, that you don't do it. If we were to even consider that, that's got to be a public process, 'cause that's obviously important to the public is, as well as important to us. Because we have to remember that another part of the charter says that the cit- seven point two capital A, "The city manager shall hold office at the pleasure of the city council." That means we're managing. That means we're acting as five in doing that process. If he's acting at our pleasure, never, forget the charter for a moment. I'll go to, into that in a minute. Never would it be in the public's interest to require a supermajority vote to fire him. Section seven point two, capital B, open print, to, two, closed print, very specifically states, if we're not happy with the manager, how we as five individual council members go about adapting a resolution, which would be by a normal majority vote. To change that to a four-fifths vote would be to change the intent of the charter and would take a vote of the people. And it's not appropriate, in my opinion, to change the charter. It worries me that anyone would ask to change it to a four-fifths vote, 'cause if you're doing your job and you're, you're doing it well, and even if you're taking chances in doing it, you need a majority vote to stay in office. That's okay. The only time you'd need a supermajority vote is if you're not doing a satisfactory job. And you want to put up barriers to the five individuals for whom you are there at their pleasure. And I think we have to ask before even the charter, when would it ever be ethical or in the public's interest for us to even consider changing it to a four-fifths vote?
Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question? Um, so, um, and I, my concern is, like, let me give you a, a case scenario, okay? So let's say two members are out for one reason or another. Could then the majority, because we could hold a meeting with three, and the majority at that meeting would be two? Could two people choose to fire the?
You, you have to have a quorum, okay, number one, okay? And two, your question is, is interesting also in And two, your question is, is interesting also in the sense of how, which I'll get into in the minute. This agenda item came onto the agenda when one member was specifically missing and was told it wasn't gonna be handled while, while they were gone. So it's always a majority vote, so you'd have to have at least three members to do that resolution.
Okay.
And, and so if, if there were, to use the example, I think the fear maybe in asking for a super majority, if there were two members in a meeting that wanted the manager to get this resolution and one was against it, it doesn't pass. And, and I would always say, and I think we've had, e- e- except for a couple of occasions, one being the, the meeting I was gone, the respect to say, we need a full council present when we make decisions like that. And I think it was a council member.
If we put that as a stipulation, then, then I'm just, I'm just really concerned about, um, because there was the other time when you and I both were.
If I can, if I can just finish my, and I'll, I'll respect questions at the end. I wanna make sure these are done. I don't think we can contract around the intent of the charter. It's just, and, and that's kind of going to your question. We may not like the way it is. It may be uncomfortable, but it is the charter and absent a vote of the people, we can't do it. The next thing I'm gonna say is you can, uh, to, to one of the public, uh, Mr. Munger saying, well, you can, it's America. You can negotiate a contract. Absolutely. And I said that back at the car issue. It's always okay to negotiate. What's not okay is when you try to slip something in and you go behind people to get it. And to say, I want a coal raise, which is a raise, just so we're clear, that's fine to negotiate. And that is an appropriate thing to present uh to council as a request as part of contract negotiations. To say, I want a guaranteed raise every time one of these contracts that I negotiate and I control what the ultimate outcome, even though we can, we can approve it or not approve it. I want it tied to what I negotiate for them, in my opinion, is unethical. And at the least, it was very negligent not to think about the inherent uh conflict of interest that was presented there. And again, I want the ability to follow the process, because I want us to have these discussions. And it concerns me that council, in, we haven't had any discussions. I think it's a problem that there was this very deceptive agenda item that most of us would agree was very deceptive and that it occurred when the manager had told the only member that wasn't gonna be here that his evaluation wasn't gonna be part of the decision-making process while he wasn't here.
I, I'm sorry, council member, but I never told you that. And I cannot sit here, I cannot sit here and not interrupt you and I apologize for the interruption.
And I'm gonna stop you from interrupting. You can talk, but I'm gonna tell you that we had, and this is part of my having the floor. I, the evaluation, nope, nothing is coming up on that. I also asked you about zoning issue. Nope, no big zoning issues. You can have your say later. That, I, I, I find it interesting. Sir, I have the floor. I have the floor.
You can take the floor.
I have the floor.
Okay.
Okay? And I will respect when you talk. I would hope you would respect.
I have nothing to say.
Okay. So it is the second time, because we had the auto issue. And that brings up the next point. I think we really need to be careful as council. If we don't vote to have a personnel committee pursuant to the charter, then none, not one of us, not two of us, not any combination of us have the right to have conversations about what will be in the contract with the manager without all five of us knowing those discussions. So I would like, tonight, when we get into the next discussion, I don't think it's appropriate to have a closed session, because I don't think we're following the process for the evaluation that we've established, the policy and process. And it was decided to be on the agenda for the evaluation process by one council member, and I, I don't think it was appropriate. That's my opinion. Secondly, in relation to an opinion that was directed to our city attorney by one member of council and that attorney is part of the staff of the city, no individual council member shall on his own, his or her, I hate that our charter is the, the pronouns, own initiative, issue orders to any city employee. That would include issuing an or, I want a, a, a legal opinion on this one question. We all have to have input when that happens and we get charged for that as the citizens. And I, I think we have to be very, very careful in relation to that. I also don't think that a legal opinion that was directed to be done by one council member fits into uh MCL fifteen two six eight one H has been put on our agenda because there is no state or federal statute that allows for such an exemption. If one member asks something of the city attorney and they're gonna give an opinion, that's gotta be public. That can't be in, uh, in closed session. So I am asking us, especially in light of the trust issues that we are trying to rebuild with the community, to make sure we follow the charter, that we follow it appropriately. Doesn't matter if we feel there's a more common sense way to handle it. We've gotta handle it in that manner to have transparency, to tell the public they can trust us, not to go behind closed doors. And I think right now we have a policy. We established the policy by public meeting. We have to follow that policy. If we're gonna change it, then we need to do it in the same manner that we instituted this policy. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I would like to say a couple of things. The city manager evaluation process this year has not been going how it's supposed to be going. Um, I can't remember when, when we usually do it, but it's usually in the first half of the year. I don't know whether it's March or whether it's June, June. But that, that hasn't gone like it's supposed to be gone. At the last meeting, I believe the directive was to schedule the evaluation as soon as possible. I, I do think we need to have the conversation about the page again. I, I am not happy that the process is, you know, disorderly. I cer- under- certainly understand the year that, that we, we had, but I'd really like to see, um, you know, when we get into the next year, d- dates that are followed, procedures that are followed. You know, I'd, I'd rather it not be dependent on, on anything, you know? I, I think, I always see this as two separate issues. The evaluation process, which, which we do regardless of whether um the city manager requests a raise and then the actual raise request. Um, I think we could remove a lot of the extra noise um from the uh raise requests um or requests from the city manager for benefit changes, um, if they came in uh separate emails. If they came a week ahead of time and if they got sent to all of us at the same time. You know, I, I think, you know, when the, when the city manager, you know, Steve's saying there's a conversation with the city manager about, about, you know, contract changes or benefit um changes. You know, I think Marcus gets to ask what, what he, what he wants to ask. You know, if he wants to get individual feedback on his ask, um, to see how it's gonna be perceived. I don't, I don't think that's a backdoor conversation, but it, it needs to come from him and it needs to be his ask, because then we can res- respond to it um accordingly. I understand too that after a good evaluation, that's a convenient time to ask for a raise, but I don't think you need to ask for a raise after every good evaluation or even wait for your evaluation to ask for a raise. Um, in my mind, those things can, can be, um, can be independent. So, you know, tonight we have, w- w- last time, we said we need to get this done. Uh, I, I definitely want to go um into closed session. Marcus has made his request. Um, if we decide to discuss without him present like we did the last time, let, you know, let's, let's do that or not do that. I just, you know, Marcus has filled out his. Um, it was part of the packet. Um, I, I've read it. I've, I've made notes. You may or may not have filled out your, your own. But it was clear in the last meeting that we wanted to have the valuation. We, we wanna get it done and then we wanna move towards clarity. Now, I understand we've had a process that we followed the first five years. We tried to, to make it better. Some of that tools were better and then the year after, things kinda fell apart. I don't want things to continue to fall apart. I want things to be clear. I want, I want the dates to be followed. And then I want to consider the, the requests that, that he's made. He's certainly made these requests. He doesn't have to wait till his evaluation. The fact that we didn't do an evaluation doesn't prevent me from, um, from thinking about and deciding whether his, his, his requests um should be followed or, or whether he, whether he deserves that. So that's, that's where I'm at. I wa- I wanna do the valuation. And then, you know, the third part, the, you know, there was some back and forth in the, in the emails with the um city attorney. I don't know if that was, um, if, if I can, if I'm allowed to discuss um the nature of the request that's on the agenda?
Yeah, I would rather not.
Okay. Okay. But I do, I do wanna hear it. And I, and I think, um, you know, uh, my view, based on what Steve said already, is, is if a council member asks the city attorney for, for something, that's up for the city attorney to decide whether it's worthwhile of, of our time or the city manager's time. When I, when, when I've had the very few conversations I've had, whether I was trying to explain something or wanted something changed or it seemed like there was consensus, but Mike was trying to understand what I want, you know, I've, I've, I've had those conversations with him. If, if I have a, a question as to whether I think we, we, you know, the, if I have a question about clo- closed session, if I have a question about things we discussed in closed session, you know, I can, I can call him and, and talk to him and that does run up a, a legal bill. If, if he decides after that conversation, you know, or if he decides based on, you know, you say, um, this is a violation of the charter, that's a violation of the charter. You know, if, if I, if there are so many questions around that, that the city attorney decides this is what we're going to do, you know, if, if I asked him for a ridiculous legal opinion, he'd say, no, that would be the answer. But I don't think the asking is inappropriate. I'm, I'm a council member. I, I need legal help. It's his responsibility to make sure I can make sure the city's following the law, that I can make sure I'm following the law. Um, this is a, is, is a position that comes with rules that are, you know, criminal penalties, um, if you break them. So I, I, I wanna hear what um the legal opinion is. Um, I, I'd like to move on with Marcus's evaluation with the understanding that it, it should not go like this and this is not how the process should be followed. And then when we return back, I, I plan on discussing again um his requests for changes um to his benefits and contract.
This is, this is embarrassing. We're five months behind schedule and we're sitting here arguing. Carl, we need to go back to square one, do it the way we've done it. We can get it done in two weeks. Then we set up a committee and then we change the way we do the process. We don't go into closed session, no, absolutely not. And I wish I could believe every lawyer I ever talked to, because I don't. That puts you in a special category, son. But let's just do it the way we did before and then we'll take the proper steps to change it. It makes more sense to me, but that's just me. How do you feel?
Appreciate that.
And I promise I'll give more than one word answers. Oh, you're laughing now.
When we were, the last time we met um for evaluation, where we were left was where I believe Mr. King, Councilmember King, was going to help. We were talking about getting specific um criteria by which to do an evaluation. And it was left with, we were waiting to hear you were gonna come back with some ideas. And I'd been looking through emails and stuff and I've not seen that. So that was where it was left last. And that was, and, and we did not do that. So just to say that now we just have to go back and do it the way that was ineffective, just to get things moving is like, it, it just, I, it, it's important to do, to have an evaluation. Yes, it's important. And everybody in, in any, all schools, everybody else is, but they don't have a public shaming. And that's what our evaluations have turned into. And not just for the, um, our city manager, but for us, you know? I mean, it's, it's like we're just raked over the coals, um, one way or another. And it's just, it's, it's not helpful. The goal of an evaluation and, um, is to give valuable feedback to make the, to help the person you are evaluating be more successful. And when the evaluation process is set up to be like a public shaming, like putting somebody in stocks and yelling at them or that the people making the evaluation get judged for what they say publicly in the community is not helpful. So we were, that's why we talked about last time, having three or more goals that then Marcus would come up with, um, you know, show us what he has done according to those goals. And that did not happen. And that, so it fell through with probably all of us, but I know that it was, you wanted to be involved in helping making those goals. And, um, so there's that. And now to just say, well, let's go back and do the way that didn't work because it's too late to not find a way that works. And no, this isn't one time. So instead of doing that, I would propose that we do a work session and we discuss possibilities of how to evaluate and then do that. How can we do this in a humane, helpful, and effective way? So that everyone has their input, so everyone, all of us, including the city manager, and that it is not set up as, as a, if, a gotcha for humiliation. And I just, I, there are ways to do that. We were at that meeting. There are many ways to do that. I know the MML has suggestions. We, when we were at the MML at, on Mackin Island this fall, we went to a session about council manager relations and they talked about the evaluation process and I took extensive notes. And then there are also, I collected the stuff that they got. So there are other ways to do this. If we just get frustrated because too much time has passed and go back to doing the old destructive, painful, hurtful thing again, shame on us. Let's, let's schedule, instead of doing that and having it done in two weeks, let's schedule a, a, a work session, go over some of these other options, discuss them, come up with a, a choice, be a consensus. Let's all go in there with open minds. Let's look at how we can do this so it is helpful to everyone and then let's do it.
Are you done?
Yes.
Okay.
Where I disagree with you, councilperson, shippers, and I would challenge the press and the public to FOIA my last six years' worth of evaluations. Because every item I took thoughtfully, every year, and said what I thought the manager was doing well. I said where I, where I thought were deficiencies and I gave uh suggestions for improvement. So I completely disagree with you that if you review my evaluations, it was a gotcha or that it was putting the manager in public stocks, because I take our job very seriously. And I'm not, you're not insulting, but I'm saying, I'm challenging.
Talking about you just.
Uh, that, and that's okay, but I'm saying I don't believe our process is as flawed as, as what you're indicating. And, and I, I put that out there, because each and every year I did long narratives. Because I agree that you want to create an environment for someone to succeed. And I also talked about the benchmarks we had talked about and where I didn't feel they were met. And you know, sometimes, that's part of an evaluation. If someone's not meeting their benchmarks, they're not meeting their benchmarks. So I do think we still need to do that process for this year. We have to do it publicly. And again, I think each of us have to be held accountable to our voters, to our citizens of how we do that process. And, and I think they need to see it to know whether we're doing our job in managing. And, and where I, I disagree with Councilmember Engels. No, we don't individually get to get legal opinions for the attorney. They're not our attorney. They're our attorney, the council's attorney, and therefore. And therefore, when those discussions happen, the whole council needs to be aware of what those questions are. And that's why I don't think this opinion would be appropriate. And Mayor, I had sent you the email and the asking specifically from you. What did you talk about, what did you ask for on that? I didn't get the answer to that. So, I'm not comfortable going into closed session.
Wouldn't this be the chance for all of us to then hear?
No, because I, and I'm sorry, but no.
You needed to see it ahead of time.
Absolutely. This is, that's the gotcha.
A closed session ahead of time.
Hi, guys.
Sorry, sorry.
Okay. I, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna end this evening. I appreciate everybody's input, and I'm going to say that I don't think we should go into closed session tonight. We've been here for two and a half hours. I don't think that our minds are ready for this difficult discussion. Because it could be difficult, maybe it won't be. I don't have a problem using this executive feedback program that we used. I'm the one that brought it back from the MML. This tool was used to evaluate Danville Martin, who is the CEO of the Michigan Municipal League. And we made it ours, made it appropriate for Marcus's evaluation. I think it's a good tool. But I will not be a part of, ever again, dragging this process through the public eye. Marcus is an employee. This is an employee issue. Tell me one other, one other elected official, CEO, manager in the city or county that has put through such a process as this. Is it important for us to do it? Absolutely, absolutely. And we should all be able to speak very openly, very freely, have difficult discussions. But I don't, I don't believe that this should be shared to the public. We can come out with a summary. Once we're done, we can come out with a summary and say, this is where we are. But to put some of this out, just put it out in the community and to personally, whether it's Marcus Pecha or it's another city manager sometime, or a city manager in the past, has never been taken through such a public process. And I, let me finish, please. And I just, I don't have a problem sitting down, having a difficult discussion, doing this feedback program and/or revising it, if that's what we want to do. You know, you say it's important that we work as a group of five, and I agree. Since I have been here, which I've been here 11 years now, I have never not been able to speak with the city attorney. He guides our work. And so, he would be the first person that I would reach out to if I thought, oh my gosh, am I thinking clearly on this? He's always been our counselor.
But the charter, Mayor. And I would challenge you to talk to other managers or our past managers. We can't individually direct action.
Okay. We're not directing, we're asking questions.
We're asking questions, asking questions that I wanted shared with the entire council, not just Carla personally.
But you didn't let me know what that question was. You didn't share your questions with the other. The only other thing I'd say, which I want to be very specific about, and again, put out the challenge into my other councilmembers. I have never persecuted Marcus Pecha in my evaluations. I have been very thoughtful. But I'm just saying, I haven't. So, if you read my evaluations for the past six years and this year, you're going to see, I put the good and the bad and the recommendations. So, here's my other point. The only time this council has gotten into some really tense discussions is when Mr. Pecha did something behind the scenes that he shouldn't have. Which I would say, the whole car issue and the unlimited credit card, that came on without council understanding what was going on or being informed ahead of time. And this issue right now, Mr. Pecha made these public by slipping them in that agenda as COLA update. And that's something council has to address. I didn't make that public. Mr. Pecha made the terms of his agreement public by trying to sneak that in on that agenda.
If you read the Weekend Bullets, sure, the heading said that, but if you read it, it was very specific. It said exactly what.
Well, I think it's important, I think it's important moving forward.
I think the work session.
I think it's important moving forward that we do have the work session, we use this tool. And I don't ever think it's wrong for Marcus to make an ask. It's a simple yes or a no answer.
I agree.
But what we need to make sure moving forward is that those requests aren't buried within an evaluation or in Friday Bullets. It should be a clear communication to every council member. And he should never be made to feel like he can't ask. This is a learning, you know, this is a learning opportunity, right? That what we expect is that when those asks come to us, they're very clear, and they come to all five of us at the same time.
In advance notice.
In advance, in advance. And so, what I would like to do tonight is that I would like to pause on any closed session, and I would like to set a date that is not on a council meeting day so that we are all rested and we are all ready because I'll need to send this out and have everybody fill it out. Marcus has already done the work on his self-evaluation. So, we've got that as we consider doing ours. And then we'll come together for that conversation in a work session, not on a meeting night.
And if we're looking at dates, if I can make a request that it's probably after the holidays, just knowing that people are going to be traveling, busy.
We'll do our best.
After, like, after December, I was thinking?
Oh, geez.
And I think that's too long.
Well, that was part of my, you know, I know Brian suggested waiting two weeks and TI. But, you know, that was, you know, part of the sentiment of wanting to tonight because it feels like if we don't, and I know we're moving past that, but it does feel like we won't have an evaluation this year.
We will, we will. I think that if you, if you all, if you all are committed to it, we'll find a date, we'll find an afternoon that we can make this happen. Yes?
Yeah, my schedule is open.
So, in the next, before, before.
Before the holidays. And we know, Marcus, the dates that you're going to be gone. So, we'll respect those.
Maybe. Or the fifth?
The fifth is. You can't do the fifth?
Wednesday the fourth, Wednesday the fourth.
Wednesday the fourth?
Does that work for you?
I'm available on December 4.
Me too.
Oh, good, good.
Okay, that was easy.
What time are you thinking?
Four, does that work for everyone? Or earlier?
You bring four is fine for me.
Four?
We're talking about Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we'll do it at 4:00 on the 4th, which is a Wednesday afternoon.
And that's a work session, so it's open.
Okay.
So, are we, so we're saying 4:00 on the 4th? And are we?
No, let's talk about this again, what that meeting looks like. I don't think it should be, we've decided on what tool we're using, right? So, just like before, we need to, you guys get them back to me, I'll compile them. What I would ask us not to do this time is to just automatically send it out to the media uncensored, but we'll talk about that.
As I say, I've never sent it out to the media, but I make sure we agreed last time that we'll send them to each other.
We will send, yes, yes.
And I apologize, I'm not trying to belabor anything here. I just want to make sure that I'm clear, that I should update then my memo requesting the closed session?
Yes.
For the 4th?
Yes. Yes. So, it's not a work session that's open to the public. It is our evaluation.
Legally, it'll still be scheduled as a special session of the city council, which is an open meeting, and you'll start it in here. And then you'll adjourn into.
To closed session?
Yeah, work sessions are public meetings.
Okay. I just thank you for clarifying.
Okay, and Mike will do everything he can to be here. You said you got a hearing earlier in the day?
Court of Appeals, we're on argument, so.
Okay. If everybody is okay with that, then I would like to adjourn the meeting for this evening.
Mayor, I had one issue that I was going to bring up for good of the order.
We already adjourned.
I'm sorry.
What do you have?
I'm sorry.
It's a happy issue. I want to talk about, I want to talk about Christmas trees very quickly. So, a week from tonight, today, we're going to place the city Christmas tree.
We're at.
And so, we talked about, last year, we had talked about locations, and we thought a lot about those. The proposal is, we got a really nice, big one again, so to put it in the same spot. And I actually walked the block, two blocks on Mitchell Street and walked into every open business and just asked for thoughts and opinions. And it was overwhelmingly positive. Everybody's like, I can't wait for it to go there, it looks beautiful, I can look out my window and see it. The tree is donated, the removal of the tree and transportation of the tree is donated. And so, the thought is to just put it in the same spot. But because there was discussion last year, I wanted to know that that has all taken place. Everyone was very on board with it, and so.
I saw you walking the streets and sending out a.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, good job.
Don't be so cheap with the lights this year.
With the light, more lights?